This is the combined open meeting of the Northborough School Committee, the Southborough School Committee, the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, and Northborough-Southborough Superintendency Union Number Three, meeting of Wednesday, December 4th, 2024, and meeting is starting at 5:35. I'm going to call the region into order with one remote member. Northborough?
Northborough will call at 5:35 with one remote member. Joan?
Southborough will call to order at 5:35 with four out of five members present, no remote.
Thank you.
And Superintendent Union Number Three will call their meeting into order with everyone here except for one remote.
Right, so Joan Frank is remote.
And it's at, when is it?
It is, 5:36.
5:36.
Great. All right, we're going to go a little bit out of order, and we're going to start with an introduction. Superintendent Martino?
Sure, so this evening I'm thrilled to welcome Maggie Ibrahim to the school committee meeting. Maggie is Director of Equity Belonging and Community Engagement, so I thought it'd be nice for you all to meet Maggie. I know many of you have over the past three months, but welcome Maggie, and I'll let Maggie introduce herself.
Do I have a microphone or just relying on my mouth? Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm delighted to be here tonight to introduce myself and meet you all. Thank you for inviting me. My name is Maggie Ibrahim, and I'm the new Director of Equity Belonging and Community Engagement for the public schools of Northborough and Southborough. I'd love to tell you a little bit about who I am and about my time in this position thus far. I immigrated to the United States as a young child and was a student of Massachusetts Public Schools during my pre-K through 12 years. My parents raised me to place the highest priority on my education, but my schooling experience was not one where I felt I belonged and not one where I felt the most challenging, innovative, and exciting learning was for students like me. I have worked as a middle and high school teacher and worked in a position similar to this one in the state of Vermont, and when my family and I decided to relocate back to Massachusetts, it opened up an opportunity for me to join this work here. In addition, I am an educational doctoral student at the University of Massachusetts Lowell Leadership and Schooling Program, where I have focused the bulk of my research and studies on equity of opportunity for historically marginalized students. My personal and professional experiences have greatly informed and influenced my passion for this work, and I feel deeply committed and passionate about making our schools places where all students know they belong, where they are challenged and celebrated, and where our students and families feel they can show up as authentically themselves because they know our schools are theirs. During the past three months, I have focused on building relationships and listening. I have met with each of the principals, some of which I now meet with on a regular basis, met with the building leadership teams, and gone to know our teachers and students in different settings. I have met with the Coalition for Equity, and I'm in the process of supporting the team in recruiting more members and identifying some specific and focus goals. I have deeply enjoyed joining NASA and being a part of a strong, committed, and the single most collaborative team I have ever been a part of. And finally, I have loved visiting classrooms, meeting with students and families, and thinking about how I can use my past and present experiences and education to enhance the work laid out in our strategic plan. I'm very excited for what's to come, and I feel very honored and privileged to serve this community. Thank you for your time.
Welcome, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Maggie.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll open up the meeting for public comment. I'm just going to read a couple of portions of our public comment at school committee meetings policy. A speaker must begin their comments by stating their name, address, and city and town of residence. The total public comment segment will not exceed or should not exceed 15 minutes, and each speaker should limit their comments to three minutes. All right, at this time, I will open the floor up to public comment. Sure, yes. It's a great question. Yeah, there's no, we need a mic?
Jennifer Lipton-O'Connor, 21 Joseph Road, Northborough. Dear members of the Combined School Committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight as a parent of an eighth grader who has been in the Northborough school system since kindergarten. I'm here tonight to ask the committee to support safe and inclusive schools by moving forward with the new comprehensive health and physical education standards in a timely fashion. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education passed new laws in September of 2023, 15 months ago, and I'm asking the committee and superintendent and administrative team to prioritize healthy and balanced learners. I would like to share my family's story briefly so you understand why this is so important to us and why we think it should be important to everybody in our school community. I know some of you have heard this story, and I apologize, and I'm going to try to be brief. In October 2023, my son was participating in a teacher-led activity, and through no fault of his own, he suffered a significant injury to his eye. Upon speaking to numerous medical experts, it became clear that basic safety precautions had not been followed or considered. We immediately brought this to the attention of the medical team. Over the past 14 months, we repeatedly asked educators and administrators to put student safety first and ensure that evidence-based practices are followed in all content areas and throughout the entire school day, including physical education classes. It's been over a year since our son was injured, and we want to respect his privacy, but please note that the lasting physical and emotional effects are ongoing and permanent. We feel like the school and district have not done enough to ensure that student safety is considered in the PE and health arena, and we are appealing to the committee tonight in your power as you consider the superintendent's goals, vision, and your budgetary considerations moving forward, that you prioritize healthy and balanced learners. Classes should be created so all students can learn and feel they belong and are safe. There should not be a lower standard for physical education classes than there are for youth sports. Our district was awarded three grants by the Department of Education, which would pay for the curriculum, pay for teacher time and training, and other materials, and the district seems to have made a choice to take an incredibly slow approach to this work, spending the entire last year and planning to spend the entire current school year simply inventorying what they do, which they called Phase One of the curriculum review. I think that slow and thorough is critical and important work, but two years to review feels like too slow when literally students have been injured because of our practices. I think it's also important for the community to know that the comprehensive health and PE standards cover other topics that I think people are very sensitive about, which include things like sexual health, sexuality, gender identity, substance abuse, suicide prevention, et cetera. And our teachers are doing really important and really hard work, and we need to give them all of the tools to do this work, which includes evidence-based practices, evidence-based curricular materials. We've done this for math anyway, and we need to do it for health.
I'm sorry, your three-minute period is up. Please, please send your comments by email to the school committees, and we'll make sure that they get to all members. Thank you.
Take a spot, I assume?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mitch Cohen, 12 Whitney Street in Northborough. I'll state that my comments are not related to my position as Chair of the Select Board in the 10 of Northborough, but of that as a parent and community member. As you all know, I have spoken before this group many times about the importance of recognizing, in my case, Jewish holidays on the calendar, and I know calendars will be discussed a little bit later. It's honestly my, I'm really in disbelief that there are two options presented that remove them, one completely and one is a half-day, which I'll get into as to just how inappropriate that is. As a quick refresher, I'll try to do my best to get through in three minutes. Rosh Hashanah is the Jewish New Year. It's been a holiday longer than probably any other holiday people are familiar with. The current Jewish New Year is 5785. It is not a celebratory holiday, it's a deep observational holiday. It actually lasts for two days. I know most schools now only recognize the first day. I'm not asking for the second day. The other day is Yom Kippur, is the Day of Atonement. If you think that sounds serious, it is. There is, both days are spent in synagogue, they're not spent hanging around with family members or anything like that. In Yom Kippur, once you reach the age of 13, you fast for 24 hours. Briefly on the calendar options presented, option number one seems like the best option. It retains the Jewish holidays and adds proper respect for additional cultures. I think that's great. That's what I've advocated for here in the past, and I hope you give it very serious consideration. Option two has half-days for all of the religious holidays. I got to be honest, that's incredibly insensitive. The Jewish holidays, the most important time is synagogue, which the focus of that is the morning. To say you got to be in school in the morning for that, I can't believe that made it through into the packet. I really, I really can't. Option number three retains the Jewish holidays as days off and adds half-days for a few more cultural and religious holidays. I can't speak to the importance and the significance of the observational techniques of those other holidays, so I can't say whether that's a good option or a bad option. Speak to those, I think you have, who understand that more. And number four, it says, the title on that is "No Religious Holidays." It's really a no minority religious holiday calendar, because the majority religion in there obviously is part of the school calendar anyway. There's no, and you can use the excuse of, gee, it's federally mandated. Yeah, but that's, you know, it's the Christian calendar, that's going to be observed. So even saying that's not religious really isn't appropriate. I would ask you, please consider option one or option three if that is, if that is appropriate to the people that are members of those cultures. And the last thing I will say is, please set this as the standard going forward. This coming up every two or three years, as it has, is heartbreaking. It is so agonizing to see, there are a few other people here tonight that feel the same way, there are a lot more. The discussions that have gone on since this packet was published is very, very frustrating. Just set the standard, move forward. Thank you very much all for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for a public comment? Yes, sir. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is David Fialco. I live at 10 Lyman Street in Southborough. First of all, I want to thank everybody for serving on this community. You're all volunteers, you're all here because you have the community and the children in the top of your mind, and that's what you're doing this for, is their best interest. And I know that, and I know what it means to do that. I've served as the president of the Little League for Northborough and Southborough for the last three years, and so I know what it feels like to be a volunteer, I know what it takes to put your time and energy into it, and I also know what it feels like when you make mistakes and when there's oversights. And so that's, excuse my screen, that's why I'm here tonight. We've lived in Southborough for the last 11 years. Our three kids are in three different schools in this district. For the entire time we've been here, and for my wife and my life, the Jewish holidays have been observed days, and for good reason. He just said they're the most important holidays in the Jewish calendar. And we've appreciated that the district has respected those and observed those by not having school days. We're just one family, there are many others like us that are in the same boat. But even in a community that observes those holidays, when, over the last 10 years and really last year, we've observed four instances where there have been considerable oversights of those holidays, even when the days were off. So the first was Finn Elementary School. They have a fall festival every year. Twice it was scheduled on Yom Kippur. Once we were told it couldn't be changed, and then it was, it wouldn't be scheduled again, and it was. It got changed that time, but it was. This year, the Algonquin Football Game, my son plays on the football team. The game was on, I believe it was a Friday evening, it could have been Thursday, I think it was a Friday evening, and there was an effort. It wasn't a normal seven o'clock start, because the holiday fell on a Saturday, which means it starts at sundown. But even though the game started earlier, there was no way for the children to get home in time for the start of the holiday. Homework, not supposed to be given on the Jewish holidays. This year, one of my students had a teacher who gave homework and said, over the holiday weekend, because it fell on a weekend this year, "You don't have to do it if you're Jewish." And the other one was, it was actually the high school, parent-teacher conferences, the sign-up release came out at five o'clock on Rosh Hashanah, when the families were there. So those dates, I don't know if you know, but signing up for those is really hard, and you miss them. So if those oversights are occurring while this district is actually observing those holidays, I can't imagine what those oversights are going to look like when we stop observing them. And so especially now, when antisemitism is running rampant in the world, and I don't have to say the world, I mean, higher education in this state, the stuff that's going on on those campuses is devastating and insulting, especially at a time when we're so open to diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's shocking to us, and so for the Jewish community, if these days were removed, and I didn't get into which of the calendar is what, but I think you should, should maintain the calendar that observes those holidays. So thank you for your time, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you for your comment. Yes?
Jessica Levinson, 13 Strawberry Hill Road in Southborough. I want to thank everybody for being here. I don't envy the position that you have in figuring out the calendar for district. I run one for five people, and that's plenty for me. I want to echo the sentiments of the gentleman before me. I'm pretty well horrified by the number of oversights that occur, and it doesn't just occur within the school system, it actually occurs within sports and everything in our communities, because a standard has never been set across the board, and individuals who are ignorant of the situations make the decisions. And so I think, you know, when I've reached out, I've been told that diverse opinions have been included in this, and I have to question whether that's accurate when a half-day is an option on the table, simply for the fact that's been stated before, is if I'm observing high holidays with my family, we are actually at shul or temple, and so a half-day actually doesn't do anything for us. Like Mitch, I can't comment on other people's cultures, so I won't say whether that's adequate for them, they should be able to speak to that, but I would question whether the due diligence has happened by the people that serve on these committees, and I'll echo that I know that in the previous situation with the DEI, one of the DEI committees within this group, that one of the meetings was scheduled on Rosh Hashanah. There's a severe lack of understanding of marginalized or minority, I don't like that term, minority groups in this district. We are all works in progress, but the slowness at which these committees and this district is approaching these subjects is honestly galling. I sent this an email earlier, whether you've seen it or not, Polyston has already figured this out. They've actually added Diwali to their calendar and not enacted a reductive strategy. I can tell you for my two children who are still in the district, my eldest is now at UMass Lowell, that they're downright appalled, because it's already an othering situation when we don't cover these holidays, we don't openly talk about people around us, and removing them off the calendar removes a positive scenario where you can discuss why people are off that day. And I would just ask that you start considering how painful it is to put people who account for 2.4% of the US population in a position where we have to come in here and educate back repeatedly. Inclusivity is supposed to be a commitment. I'd ask you to do more of the work so that we don't have to, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any additional public comment? Time for one more.
Emily Lowe in Southborough, 213 Middle Road. I have two children in the school district. I'm also a member of Congregation Benetia woman in Westboro. I actually have a bit of a different perspective than the other Jewish speakers. I think that's actually one of the wonderful things about Judaism, is that you are always encouraged to question everything and disagree respectfully. I think it is disappointing to hear the scheduling conflicts that occur constantly over the Jewish holidays, but right now we have these Jewish holidays off, and they're still happening. And my personal feeling is that the best way that we can encourage children to live in a multicultural world is by educating them, and if our educators feel that the discontinuity of learning that occurs with this time off is harmful to the education of our children, then I think that it is a really worthy and reasonable thing for other children to be in school. And whether or not the school is in session, I'm still going to be observing my holiday, and so will my children, and that will still be something that we carry with a lot of pride. And, you know, I just think it's, you know, it's important for me that the, that the best way we can educate about all these holidays, living in a multicultural society, antisemitism, is through education, and they have to be in school to do that, so. And I don't envy your position, and I appreciate the discussion, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public comment section, this public comment section. There will be an additional opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. So at this time, I'd like to move on to the superintendent's 2024, 2025 evaluation mid-cycle review.
So thank you, Chris. This evening, I'll provide a mid-cycle review, which highlights progress towards the goal set at the start of the 24, 25 school year. The goals are aligned with Vision 2026 strategic objectives and evaluation standards set for superintendents, and this evening I'll provide some highlights and a summary of progress on the mid-cycle review. So one of the goals was to enhance instructional practices and materials to engage students in meaningful learning. So we've done a lot of work with universal design, we completed a professional learning session on universal design for learning, which resulted in much positive feedback from the participants. We implemented instructional materials for English Language Arts at the middle school, continue to move our SEL program, Second Step, across our grade levels, highlighting the middle school. And ongoing work is continuing with our Second Step implementation, lessons and SOS expert screenings by the year end. The other update is on strategic objective equity of opportunity and fostering an inclusive and culturally responsive learning environment for students. We did, through the work of our tech department and Dr. Reinhorn, we did train all of our educators on our data resource tool, AnalytMew, ensuring that the data is used for instructional planning. We launched the Coalition for Equity and onboarded Director of Equity Belonging and Community Engagement, and Maggie will be leading the coalition. We initiated steps to assess where we are in terms of the district equity audit, and we are in the process of launching the Story Bridge Project, which will take place this spring. Ongoing work is finalizing the Say Something Anonymous reporting for younger students at the fifth grade level, and right now we're awaiting some information around parent permission, so that is work that is in progress. Strategic objective, healthy and balanced learners, to promote student social, emotional, and physical well-being. So again, the health framework was launched in the fall of 2023. We do have a curriculum review process and cycle that we move through, and we have been moving through that process. We've identified a team to look at what currently is happening, identify alignment, and identify where we need to do a better job aligning with comprehensive health standards. So Mary Ellen Duggan and Andy McGowan are leading that team with the goal of having a recommendation for implementation for the 2025, 26 school year. In terms of educator learning and leadership, supporting professional growth and collaboration among educators, so one of the achievements was presenting, or progress was presenting the school proven plans to the school committees, and we've begun looking at how to best measure progress for this year. Those plans were reauthorized and presented to each of the school committees respectively. We did provide additional professional learning on a variety of topics on the Professional Learning Day that centered on equity and belonging, and we've also done some training on Title VI and Title IX investigations with the leadership team, and we implemented Equity Belonging PD on the November 1st of Wellness Day. Ongoing work will be finalizing progress monitoring dashboards, conducting spring training sessions. And lastly, in terms of strategic objective finance and operations, ensuring sustainable, secure, and efficient operations, supporting education. We've completed safety drills at all 10 schools and updated our safety protocols. We've installed solar arrays at two elementary schools in Northborough and completed the Massachusetts School Building Authority Phases for Building Projects. NURI Building Committee completed the feasibility phase, as in non-schematic design, and the Peaslee Building Committee has completed all the requirements for the eligibility phase. And we're also looking to install a solar array here at Algonquin, which is under construction as we speak. Ongoing work is continuing to work on selecting a transportation provider. So Becky and the finance team did an excellent job preparing the bid and getting the bid out, and those bids are due back on December 16th. We'll evaluate the data and come to some decisions. So I think the mid-year progress demonstrates that we're moving toward the goals that we established at the beginning of the year. I feel like we are on target to achieving those goals. When I looked at the mid-cycle evidence that I outlined in the goal document, we have achieved most of the goals, mid-cycle data points. And lastly, just want to acknowledge that this is work of many, this is work of principals, educators, central office leadership team, so it's very comprehensive in terms of who's helping kind of lead this work forward. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Martino, are there any questions or comments from the committees? Dawn?
Greg, I just want to say thank you for the updated format. I think that it's really helpful to see the specific pieces of evidence for each part of the action steps and whether it's completed or not, so thank you.
I'll try to do that. For the section that you talked about, the comprehensive health implementation, what are the next steps with that? You mentioned that Mary Ellen and someone else are going to be providing a recommendation for 25. After they provide the recommendation, what's the next steps that we can expect or anticipate so we could possibly influence that?
Sure. So we use the same curriculum instruction review process in any of the disciplines, and in this case, we were really fortunate to have grant support, to have a committee this year with representatives from, this set of standards involves health, physical education, and social-emotional learning. So we have representatives for all of those disciplines. This year, we're doing Phase One of that process and possibly moving into Phase Two, see sort of how it progresses. It's really complex with three different disciplines. Phase One is assessing and planning, so it's looking at the standards, looking at what we currently do, and then creating a plan. Phase Two is depending, and it may vary for those three disciplines, in fact, it's likely to, is to say, do we need to revise existing units of study or curriculum, or do we need to select something might be a published curriculum in some areas? And that becomes then Phase Two, is selection or evaluation of curriculum resources that can support the work. And then Phase Three is implementation, and Phase Four is ongoing monitoring. And so that's sort of the progression we go through, and we are, that is aligned with DESI recommended steps, and through the grant, we are working with consultants that DESI contracted with. In fact, Andy McGowan, Mary Ellen, and I met with one of the consultants on Monday this week, and so they are providing some of the PD or connecting us to PD providers and supporting our process and using the resources from DESI. So it's a collaborative effort that's, we're very tightly linked to kind of what's going on in other districts across the state.
My initial reaction to that is, I guess, between 2024 and 2026, which is possibly when Phase Two might conclude, is there a way that we can make sure that we implement that? Phase 2 might conclude, is there a way that we can make sure that we implement, monitor and implement any safety prevention protocols in that time span? Because maybe you have the recommendation, but you can't, you're not implementing until Phase 2. I just wondered, like, are we filling the gap in this time?
Yes. So, we updated our health and safety standards for physical education, and they went into effect in the fall of this year. And that was something we were working on last year. We worked with our, it was, we used resources from National, from Shape America and National Resources. We worked with our legal counsel to kind of cover all of our bases in terms of just the comprehensiveness of it. And that is already in place as of this fall, K pre-K to 12. So, we are making changes as we go. It's not just to hold steady until those safety things are in place. There are actually units that teachers are updating because they are studying the standards. And so they're not sort of waiting. At the same time, the sort of bigger decisions about, are we seeking to purchase new curriculum resources, let's say, for a health class? Those were, you know, going systematically through the process to get to those.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other comments? Thank you very much, Superintendent Martino, for the update. Next on the agenda is the Calendar Advisory Working Group update.
Sure. So let me just launch my presentation. So people will probably have to shift locations. So, this evening, I am pleased to share with you an update on the work of the School Calendar Advisory Working Group. It has been meeting since the beginning of 2024, held its first meeting in February of '24. I just want to acknowledge and thank all the members of the Calendar Advisory Working Group. And across the meetings that we've held, we've had many great conversations and discussions around what the goals are, and also learning about different religious observances and their meaning and their significance across a variety of faiths. And just want to acknowledge everyone's thoughtful, caring, and the time they put into this conversation and discussion. This evening's presentation really is the thinking and some of the work of the Calendar Advisor Working Group. It is not, it is not a recommendation, it's getting the committee up to speed of the work thus far. So I think it's important to talk about our core values as a district, our strategic plan, and our mission and vision. And I think when we talk about a calendar, it's reflective of our core values. So, our core values are integrity, equity, empathy, perseverance, inclusivity, and respect. So it's not just a calendar. It's a calendar that is symbolic of these values that we've set forth as a district. So really, we launched with a central question, what NSRO '25, '26 school calendar best represents the district's core values, mission, and vision? So that was the driving question that the Calendar Advisory Working Group has been centered on since it began its work. I think also, it's important to talk about who we are as communities. We are becoming much more diverse, culturally diverse, linguistically diverse. And if you look at our data over the past 10 years, we, as communities, look very different in terms of race and ethnicity and cultural diversity than we did 10 years ago. So, our communities are changing, and I think it's healthy and exciting. So just kind of center the committees on some key documents. So the school committees are aware of the calendar policies. It speaks to the school committee's responsibility for setting a school calendar and when a school calendar needs to be set for the next academic year. The district also has a religious observance policy. This is a policy that the combined policy subcommittee is taking up and visiting and revisiting to strengthen. Then also, we looked at DESI's required time on learning documents. And lastly, the committee, members of the committee did a pretty thorough view of district calendars across the Commonwealth to see what calendars exist, and that was kind of a guiding document as well. And I can share with you that there are so many variations of calendars across the Commonwealth. There's not, not a standard calendar. And if you look closely in our geographic region, you can find the same variation that you find across the state. So, the working group really studied four different calendar options, and I'll review each of the calendar options, talk about what is included in the calendar option, also share some of the advantages and disadvantages that the working group developed, and then open it up for questions and discussion for the committee. So, Calendar 1. So, I think one of the key aspects of Calendar 1 is it includes non-school days on more religious observances. So in addition to Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and Good Friday, it also adds a non-school day on Diwali and Eid. And also, we looked at Lunar New Year in the '25, '26 school calendar. Lunar New Year falls on during February break, so it's not listed as a, as a non-school day. When we look at the first day of school, it's August 28th, and when we look at the first day of the start of the school year, it's contractual. So we have collective bargaining agreements that really sets the date for the start of the school year. And in terms of the end of the school year, that is set by the state, and that is June 30th. We have to conclude the 180 days by June 30th. So it's really the will of the committee to determine how best to place those 180 days from August 28th to June 30th. So I won't review all of the advantages. These were directly from the work of the Calendar Working Group. But I would say that by giving full days off for various religious observances, the calendar shows respect for the diverse religious practices within the community. I think as we think about recruiting a more diverse faculty and staff, having a calendar that symbolizes a more diverse religious observance actually is a signal for people who are applying for jobs. I think a disadvantage is that no calendar is going to meet everyone's kind of faith. When we look at the interfaith calendar, it is extensive. So the question the Calendar Working Group has asked is, who are we missing? Who is not included in the calendar? And one example is the Orthodox Christian holidays. So they're different than traditional Christian holidays. For example, the Orthodox Christmas is celebrated on January 7th for this, for this school year. So, again, who are we missing? There's no calendar that is perfect and meets everyone's needs.
Yes, a question, Greg. How does, how does a half-day count towards the 180 as a half, or as a...
It counts as a full day, so it counts as a full day. It counts as 180, one of the 180 days. So Calendar 2 parallels Calendar 1. The first day is on August 28th. The last day of school is on June 11th. So this calendar reflects religious observances as a half-day for students. The other half-day is professional learning for educators. So Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Diwali, Eid, and Good Friday would be half-days for students and professional development days in the afternoon for educators. I think that the challenge with this calendar is that, you know, it minimizes the, you know, advantages, it minimizes the impact of the overall school schedule. So some would argue that it's more continuous in terms of the learning schedule. Some of the disadvantages is that childcare becomes really challenging for half-days for many families, that half-days for some observance, religious observances is insufficient. And thirdly, it is a total combined loss of learning for our students of two school So Calendar 3, again, the last day for students is June 15th. Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur are non-school days as they have traditionally been. Diwali, Eid, and Good Friday are half-days. And I think that, you know, that the advantage is the half-days try to minimize the impact on the overall schedule, the school schedule. It tries to take a nuanced approach to looking at the religious observances and what faith groups need in order to observe their practices. The challenge with half-days, again, it's childcare for students. Half-days, again, scheduling consistency is disrupted. And I think it's hard for, for the school committee to make a determination of who gets a non-school day or who gets a half-day. So there's, there's this kind of value judgment that is, that is in, in the calendar, the calendar 3, for those half-days for Diwali, Eid, and Good Friday. The last calendar is a calendar where there are no consideration for religious observances as non-school days. So it does not have Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, Diwali, Eid, and Good Friday as non-school days. This, again, is a calendar that provides, one could say, more continuity of learning, less four-day weeks. However, you know, so advantages, you know, it looks at, it truly takes a secular approach to looking at the calendar. The challenge is that even with a secular approach, I think there are observances that are built in, built into the calendar. So it already kind of leveled, it's not a level playing field for other religions other than Christians. So, again, it's, it's, it's not all secular because it's built into kind of our, our standard calendar. So in terms of another analysis, the working group looked at, was looking at each of the calendars and really looking at the number of five-day weeks in each calendar kind of studied, looking at the number of four-day weeks, the number of 48 weeks where there's a Monday or Friday off, the number of four-day weeks where there are mid-weekday off, number of weeks where there's less than four days, and then the number of half-days. So again, just another lens to look at the four calendars in comparison. And lastly, one of the questions that was studied was, do districts that have a comparison calendar to Calendar A, who've had that calendar in place, are they seeing a significant decline in student achievement? So, we looked at calendars that, school districts that have a calendar similar to Calendar A with Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Diwali, Eid, and Good Friday off. We looked at their academic performance and compared it to Northborough and Southborough. From this comparison chart, it's only one metric. It does not appear that those districts' academic performance declined as a result of having a more inclusive calendar. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know there are many members at the table who sat on the working group and can speak their experience. Again, the goal this evening is not to present a calendar to vote on, but to present kind of the thinking and the work the Calendar Advisor Working Group has done. And again, I just want to thank people who've been on this journey, are taking it very seriously, are doing a lot of study and research, and are approaching it very thoughtfully. So I just want to thank the working group for, for its time thus far.
Thank you, Greg. I also would like to thank the working group for its, its hard work here. This is a difficult, it's a very difficult task. So I think what the superintendent is looking to bring back to the working group is just kind of some general direction as to what calendars, calendars to potentially explore more or disregard, or just to provide some guidance essentially back to the working group. So I would be open to comment at this time from any of the committees.
Can I...
Yes.
Can I speak to the student's perspective just for a minute? Well, I personally can't speak to the emotional and mental toll of not having your religious holidays would have on a student. I just want to emphasize the issues of not having those holidays off for the students within those groups. There's a big urge and push from the district and teachers especially to have good attendance and maintain regular class attendance. And if we get rid of or stop recognizing the holidays of many different religious groups, that'll put the students within those groups at a significant disadvantage because even if you're taking the day off and the school day's still going on, you're missing important instructional time. And while you're observing your religion, you shouldn't have to be worrying about the curriculum that will keep going on without you.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, you know, I've been on either the Southborough or Regional Committee for 13 years now. So I'll, and I know my perspective on this has changed with time, especially now that my kids are out of school, so I'm moving from the sort of day-to-day crush of the school year. I was on a similar study group to this one about 10 years ago, so I understand the range of perspectives in play. But I think with the benefit of hindsight, now that my kids are done, I think I've come to realize that a day or two here or there doesn't really mean much compared with the idea of making sure that all our kids feel welcome, respected, as well as their parents. And I think especially at the high school level, I mean, it's important that we're not adding additional stress to kids for what is already a stressful time, you know, by making them choose between coming to school on a day when they should be doing other things. So, you know, if we have to add a day or two or three to, to make students and families feel like they're welcome and respected in this community, I would argue it's a very small price to pay. And with the benefit of hindsight, I can say, you know, with some confidence that you won't regret adding a couple of days to a given school year. So, you know, I don't think it's going to matter in the big scheme of things when your summer vacation starts. So, I mean, for me, I, I won't be voting for any calendar that doesn't recognize important religious holidays. So to me, that means deciding which holidays those are. You know, I think the Jewish community's made good arguments over the years for Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, Good Friday, you know, I'm a Catholic. I've never understood why we need a full day off for, for Good Friday, frankly. And the others, I, you know, I honestly don't know enough about them to say. That's to me where I'm at and where I'd love to see the discussion go.
Thank you, Paul. Lauren?
So first, just a point of clarity, Greg, when you were talking about Calendar A, you referred to Calendar 1 when you were comparing the academic achievement.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify because there was a little bit of a discrepancy there. So I, I think that the working group has quite a diverse group of individuals from all different sort of areas of our community, which has been so helpful. And so I think really what the working group is looking for from everyone here, and I think Greg sort of alluded to that, is, you know, are there any questions at play? I mean, there's a lot of the advantages and disadvantages that you see in your packet here that Greg talked to a little bit, but is there any other information we need before the working group comes forth in our March meeting with a recommendation? So what's missing? What kind of information? Have we maybe not considered? What perspectives have we yet to consider? Because the work has been pretty thorough, but, you know, the working group is here to serve the committees and to make a good recommendation. So if anyone has anything, we would love to hear that.
So I have one thought, I think partly informed from the commentary that we heard before the, the meeting today or during the public comment period. I appreciate the work that was done by the council. I appreciate the work that was done by the county connect. I think it's exactly what we asked the committee to do, is to do research, come to us with options. What I was unprepared for was the possibility that something that was presented today could be viewed as insulting around the idea of the half days. So I guess my ask would be, when we come back with a recommendation, if, if half days, I tend to find myself in a similar place as Paul, where I'd want anything that would respect the days off for religious observance. If, if the half day is a recommendation, how do we feel confident that it adequately meets the need of, of that particular community? And if it does, then I think we can get behind it. If it doesn't, then it shouldn't be presented. So thank you.
May I respond to that? So we have had so much conversation about half days and the different religious observances and the practices that sort of fall as part of that religious observance and whether it's morning, evening, a full day event. And the half days for many of these religious observances are not, are not going to sort of solve this problem of students who want to both attend school and practice their religion and observe these holidays. So we have had quite a bit of conversation that half days aren't really the best solution.
Any other comments?
I'd like to echo everyone's thanks to everyone who's on the list and, you know, all the hard work that's been put into this together and for the presentation because it was very helpful for me to see where everything's coming from. I think it sounded from the presentation, like there was, the group did look at other committee, oh, sorry, another committee, other towns' calendars, like what you see in the chart. And I would like to know if there are other holidays that are observed by other towns that are not on this list that have maybe come up, even if, and I'm not sure if you'd be able to find this, but if there was a town that talked about another observance but then decided not to observe it for whatever reason, or if there are things beyond just the five, I think, days that we're considering that other towns might observe. I think it's, it was definitely in some of the disadvantages, and I'm sure there's been some conversations about it, but I would like to be able to look at a full picture, including if we choose a calendar that has five days off, for example, are there other holidays that we might have to consider a year or two years or something? And have other towns already done that?
Thank you so much for that.
John.
So thank you again to all the committee members that participated in preparing the information, very helpful. Question for you.
You just wanted to say thanks, we appreciate it.
I did want to say thank you, but I am curious. The, the people that participated, so, I guess, I was, I was surprised at the sort of the, the feedback and some of the emails that came through. So I know that there was a lot of secular people that participated, so is there a leaning towards something? Or, I mean, is there a thought that where we're going to go to? Not yet.
We haven't done a, a formal vote on any of them. The last meeting we had was weighing the advantages and disadvantages of each one. And then before we officially chose one, we wanted to check in with the committee to see if you are in support of our process so far, and if you had any concerns or, as Lauren said, we do have a, a diverse group working on this. But we missed, like, it's possible to miss because obviously we're not 100% of the community represented on our committee. So we just wanted to know where are areas that.
Yeah. And so the question I really did want to ask, thank you for that. If we, when you come back and present and vote, is it going to be to what the participation suggested, is it going to be an annual event or will this be good for 10 years?
I, I mean, I personally hope that this is like the end of the discussion and it goes, you know, with the district going forward, like, that would be what we are, like, agree on. But again, it's the will of the committee on how we decide as a whole. Do we want to implement this for a trial year? Do we want to implement it for whatever? I think it's the will of all of us to decide on how we want to do it.
I would personally challenge that because, I mean, I think, one, I wouldn't set a timeline on it. I think we should try to ensure that our calendar reflects the community that we have. And if the community changes, as I think Greg, you highlighted, then we should be willing to change the calendar to accommodate that. So I think setting a timeline on when we want this calendar to adhere to our, to the school days, I think is, we shouldn't hold ourselves to that.
I took it moreover, I agree with you in that, like, change the, I took it moreover, like, for example, if we were to say, okay, we're going to keep the holidays, you know, we're going to add these holidays, is there a threat for the following year coming back saying, okay, now we're going to get rid of them?
That's right.
That's what I was taking, not is it like, this is the schedule for it. I was saying, whatever we decide.
This is a agreement for five years, period of the story, all of a sudden saying, are we going to have another work? We have a working over every year.
Yeah.
We're going to, this is a, this is a, this is a special.
I'm hoping this is a one-time thing and we, we decide as a structure.
Well, it's one time unless you come back with 75 holidays that we, that other communities are in fact carrying that we have to accommodate.
Sorry, I had one other comment I wanted to make unrelated is that, just reflecting on the public comment, and I don't know if it's within the purview of this group, but, you know, there seemed to be some sensitivity also to school-related events that not, not having to do with the school day, you know, for the ball game or the season fall festival. And so whether it is related or something separate, it may be good to also denote, all right, we will not be adding certain events after, during these hours on a given day to associate with this particular holiday. Again, maybe that's outside the purview of this committee, but maybe it's also something you may want to think about.
I'd love to see something like that, like, along your lines, going to the select board of like the town, like the committee, and have them rule on things. Because if the town's going to say, okay, there's nothing on these days or whatever, then that's something that the sporting people, that, you know, if you're going to have a sport in this town, you have to go by these, like, rules, you know? I think, I think we can really only control what's going on in the schools in, in order for it more than I think it needs to come and expand across the.
Yeah, I just, at the very least, to be aware of it.
No, I would say that is something that, that we have strived to be better at, you know, looking at the different religious observances and how they're observed and trying to schedule so we're not putting, you know, students at a place where they have to make choices and families have to make choices. We're not, we're not there yet. You know, there are times when we're scheduling events across 10 schools that there, there are misses, but I think we've done a better job and we do try to approach it with a lens of, okay, you know, you know, what are the, the key observances, what observances are, is the community practicing that we need to kind of think about our schedules and work around those as best we can.
Bryce.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Chris. I mean, just building on a lot of what's been said, and I don't want to speak directly at you. Are you guys like acting as representatives?
Well, I mean, we're here, so, I mean.
Talking to, I don't want to feel like I'm talking at you.
No, that's fine.
But, Kamali to rhythm. But I do want to just air some consideration, and I guess what would be helpful to understand from the committee, as we walk down the path of adding, no change or adding, are we really tuned into the growing diversity of religions within our community and the potential asks moving forward linked to what the decision-making matrix is for a half-day, no-day, or school day? I mean, I think the part that is just worth being very considerate about is not creating another hierarchical structure based on faith that the argument as of now is saying has had a negative impact on the community around it. So I think, like, I apologize, I think we can carry the value of wanting to build a space that is inclusive and welcoming and is increasing the sense of belonging and the eyes wide open on the impact it could have across the system more broadly. I mean, I think if you dive into the demographics, which are, I think, either it has definitely changed and/or the data is just better, the diversity of religious practices, including some that go unrecognized, are increasing. And so if an event is during the day, is the school closed? If the event is during the evening, is the next morning considered? Like, these are things that we can't just jump into without really wrapping our heads around what 10 to 15 years down the road could look like. And so I just caution us on our approach to this. And I think it would be helpful for the committee to do a review of what those could be, given the people who are in those groups come and ask for them.
Thank you, Bryce. Roger.
So I'm actually also on the committee, but Bryce, I'm delighted if you don't talk at me, you can just continue to talk about the people that you remember were on the committee. So, comment about annual anything? I think trying to do anything annually is totally impractical. I mean, it's, first of all, it's, we're going to spend almost a year, you know, just on this, and frankly, there have been discussions about this in previous years. So it takes a while to get through this, and frankly, if whatever is chosen, it's going to take more than a year to kind of determine how it worked out. So I don't know whether the, you know, I'm not saying it should last forever, but I'm saying it, it needs to, it needs to stick for a while before I think people can reasonably evaluate how it worked out. And I understand that communities change, okay, but I don't, I don't think that a community's going to change quickly enough to, you know, to counteract the, the importance of actually letting a decision sit for a while and make a judgment over at least a few years. One more comment on communication. And I've done this before at different school committee meetings. I really encourage the community to communicate with school committee members via email. I mean, I received an email, our committee received an email, I think, recently, and it's, it's so beneficial to be able to have a well-thought-out email that you can actually evaluate before a school committee meeting. It potentially gives you the opportunity as a committee member to maybe even make some comments or, or offer some thoughts that you wouldn't have otherwise. It's really tough to, to kind of hear a two or three-minute, and I have nothing against public comment, but to hear a two or three-minute public comment and try to do much with it, okay? So if, if you really want, I think, school committee members to think through your, your thinking, send an email. I guarantee you, we read all of the emails, even people that maybe wouldn't have, wouldn't necessarily be at the meeting, okay, they're going to read the emails also. And it's pretty easy to reread an email two or three times. I'm sorry, I'm just not going to go back and look at the tape, okay, the recording, and try to follow that public comment through several times. So just a, you know, personal comment, but I've talked to some other school committee members and, and they've, they've supported the idea that emails are really, really valuable, you know, to, to get your thoughts to school committee members.
Thank you. Lauren.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on your question, John, because we never really answered it, and it was about, you know, is the working group sort of leaning one way or the other? And so although I can't speak for every single member, I do want to sort of give sort of the.
Would there be?
Sorry, the feeling of our.
Would there be any?
I do want to sort of just talk about the feeling of our conversations during our working group meetings. So, you know, we, we are a generally diverse group of people. I, I, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that the majority of the people as part of the working group are there because they feel strongly about.
Improving.
Improving the belonging and inclusivity of our school district. So that being said, although we looked at the school calendar options and possibilities through many lenses like academic success, opportunities for professional development, continuity of learning, really the inclusivity and belonging piece was strong. So that being said, I think we probably all guess which calendars probably are, will be the recommendations. A couple of things that really were sort of strong, I guess, strongholds throughout our conversation was, you know, opportunities for staff of different backgrounds, religions, cultures to feel welcomed in our district, need to see that we value those cultures, And we do that by offering time off when necessarily either religiously or culturally. And so we talked about that. We also really just talked about that half-day approach, so to go back to what I think you were talking about, Matt. And especially, I think it was calendar three, where we had some half-days and some, you know, full days off for different religious observances. I think we all just said that that feels icky, like, who are we to decide a half-day or a full day, which we've sort of talked about a little bit. So I know that the working group is, you know, we're not open meetings, but our job is to then bring that conversation back here. So I hope that that was a little bit helpful.
So I think that was really helpful, and I appreciate the fact that it's not an open meeting, and hopefully people that are listening and the audience kind of can appreciate that. While four options were actually presented, there is, there is potentially, you know, a consensus potentially that's going to be, be coming out. And a reminder to everyone that's listening or here, we asked for four choices. AL may not be very attractive, but we wanted to make sure that we had a full range of options. Sounds like.
All right. In the interest of time, I think we're going to accept Jen's comment, and then we're going to move on in the agenda.
So I just wanted to, I guess, say what would be helpful for me, and I think I've raised this before as a question, that if you presented racial, racial and ethnic group or some demographics there, but not, not any demographics or data on what kinds of religious spiritual groups that we have in Southboro and kind of the makeup. So I'm just wondering, in that question of what's missing, do we, like, and how we know what's missing, is there a way to get that data so that we are not missing potentially important?
I don't think it's legal to ask somebody. So without that, it all comes, like, you could put a survey out, people can choose to do it, but then you're only really getting the results of whoever responds. So we could ask, but it's still not going to be the whole picture.
Well, the census, the US census, I mean, it is voluntary, but the US census is a reasonable representation.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it's posted, I think it's like a couple years back, the last I saw.
It's a little old, yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, it's not, it's still, so it might be how we were like, you know, four, four or five years ago. Yeah. But we've discussed it.
But even the census, there is no guarantee, you know, of the thorough, I guess, of the completeness, right? If you don't want to answer certain questions, you won't because of privacy issues. It's difficult.
Yeah. I don't know if there's like a, a way to, to send out that information to the community asking, you know, if these are not considered, if your holiday's not considered up there, can you at least.
We did.
Thank you.
All right. Again.
I've got like 30 seconds to follow up on one thing. If you were talking about, well, can this be the last time we discuss this? I don't see any way you can do that because as the composition of this committee changes, it's going to come up again. As the composition of the, the population changes and, you know, there's a different cohort of parents every 12 years, you know, entirely different. So, well, not entirely, but pretty much, you know, you get the idea. So that's why this keeps coming up again and again, and that's why, you know, we have to do this again, so.
All right. Again, thanks to the working group for the difficult work that you've done. All right, moving on to the agenda, Greg, personnel update.
So in your packet is the personnel update as of December 4. And we had two appointments and just acknowledged one retirement at the central office, Sandy Burches, who is administrative assistant to student support services, is retiring effective January 3rd. So she didn't let us know several months ago, so she'll be missed, but we are in the process of finding a person to take on that responsibility. And we will be inviting Sandy to. And we will be inviting Sandy to upcoming combined school committee meeting, probably in March if she's willing to come back, just to acknowledge her hard work and dedication to the district.
All right. Next on the agenda is action on minutes. So, we're going to take action on the combined executive session meeting minutes of June 13th, 2024. These are executive session minutes, so...
To retain or release?
Release, to release. So, I think what we'll do is we'll go through the committees in the order that's listed. So, do I hear a motion to approve and release the combined executive session meeting minutes of June 13th, 2024? Northborough?
So, vote for Northborough.
Second.
Southborough?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. For the region?
So moved.
Second.
And moved by Paul, seconded by Jen. And for the union?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion on the executive session minutes? All right. Northborough?
Joan?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And myself as a yes, it passes unanimously.
For Northborough, excellent. Southborough?
All in favor. Passes four out.
Okay. And the region? Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes. Jen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And my, I am a yes, the motion passes. And for the union?
Okay, for the union, Alan?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, passes unanimously.
Excellent. The motion is passed unanimously for all four committees. Next, action on the combined open meeting minutes of September 18th, 2024. So, these are just to approve and release. So, we'll start with Northborough.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Kristin, seconded by Lauren.
Excellent. Southborough?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Roger, moved. Alan, seconded.
Excellent. The region?
So moved.
Moved by Paul?
Second.
Seconded by Chris. And the union?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Did somebody else second?
Alan did.
Okay. Seconded by Alan. Who moved it?
I did.
Okay. Moved by Chelsea, seconded by Alan.
All right. Very good. Any discussion on those minutes?
Okay.
All right. Northborough?
Joan?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
And myself as a yes.
Excellent. Southborough?
All in favor. Passes four out.
Region? Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, passes unanimously.
Excellent. The motion is passed unanimously for all four committees. All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is communications.
So, yes, so in your packet is the first report from the Ascot Valley Collaborative. We have been a longstanding member of the collaborative and I serve on the board of directors. So, this is the first report that you'll receive for this year and would be happy to answer any specific questions about ABC.
All right. Excellent. All right. At this time, I will entertain a second public comment. Again, please state your name and address.
Absolutely. Mitch, going 12 Whitney Street. A mishmash of comments, some sort of have my, have my select board hat on, some don't. I want to thank the fact that you've got a student here. I didn't realize that at first. That's wonderful and I loved your comments on the calendar item. On the select board, we are trying to get a student, as Greg is nodding, and hopefully we'll hear something soon.
Talk about this, I got it.
Thank you. I thought it was great that you're hiring a director of equity. I thought it was a little strange that she left right at the beginning of the meeting before there was a conversation that was, seemed to be right within that wheelhouse. I assume there was a reason for that. I look forward to seeing you there. The town has an equity, a diversity equity belonging, inclusion and belonging committee. It hasn't met in a number of months. It is meeting next week. I'm going to suggest an invitation, go out to maybe make her informally part of that process. I'm the select board's liaison to that committee. And following up on Kelly, what you suggested, I'm going to ask that, that we have some, some related discussion to that, at that meeting and start to figure out how we can synchronize some of those interests on the municipal side, at least within Northborough, and the school side. I want to invite everyone to the town's Tanaka Minoro lighting in Northborough, which will be on the 30th of December, which is a Monday night at 5:30 PM on Blake Street, right where the Tourist's Tree is. The last couple of things, I've, I've mentioned this before in public comment at joint meetings, it is hard in the audience to hear. It really is. You've got great microphones, the recording is fantastic. If you are back there, it's almost impossible to hear some people. Some people's voices are louder than others, carry than others, that's not your fault. Somehow that gets, needs to get figured out. Hopefully, a speaker can be put in, something like that. It's also hard to see in the audience with the wonderful cable equipment that is here is blocking the view, so it's sometimes it's hard to see who's talking and that makes it even a little bit harder to hear as a result because your eye connects the mouth movements. I would suggest that maybe work with the wonderful cable department that we have here and see if there's something that can be done to relocate the, the equipment or the cameras or something like that to help with that. That will help for the audience that is here and present. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Yes, please, come up to the microphone, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Christine Austin. I'm at 48 Meadow Road in Northborough and I just wanted to encourage everyone, or well, thank you to everyone on the calendar committee. I really appreciate all the work and I really want you to consider option one. I, as a member of the Muslim faith, I would really, really appreciate being able to, you know, have the Eid holiday off without having to worry about my son missing school. My daughters graduated from Algonquin and I can tell you that they were affected by, you know, having to miss school to celebrate Eid. I remember one of my daughters, you know, was getting emails from her teacher that she had to do work and so on Eid, like on our Eid day, which is like our Christmas, she was saying that she had to go do an assignment. So, it's, it's really hard for families to choose, you know, whether to miss school or go to school. And I think it would be, you know, more inclusive. I think it, you know, represents our community more. We have a very diverse student body. My son's on the wrestling team and if you see the wrestling team, there's like so many, you know, so many different kinds of students, you know, really diverse. So, I, I just really think it would be awesome to include all the holidays. And I know that it extends the school year somewhat and it leaves the door open for potentially more days off as more communities come forward. I also think that it's important to consider and be mindful of the message that it sends if someone asks for a holiday off and the result is that you take away a holiday from someone else. I think that sends a message and it makes, it could make people reluctant to come forward because they'll be afraid if I say something, it's going to affect someone else in a negative way. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? All right. Thank you very much. All right. At this time, I believe Northborough is going to stay in session, but probably recess for a few minutes. I will entertain a motion from the region to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Paul?
Second.
Seconded by Sean. We'll have a roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.